Yeah, go ahead and turn it on. That way, right when I hit six, we are ready.
Form present.
All right, it's six o'clock. Form being present, call this meeting to order. We have the consent agenda in front of you. Are there, is there anything to add?
Not to the consent agenda items, to the open agenda, we do have a policy that we need to look at tonight that we didn't get to last week.
Are there any questions concerning-
That's not all.
Consent agenda items?
No, no changes to the consent items.
And is there a motion to approve the consent agendas presented?
So do.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, and we'll move on to administrative reports, which are-
That's me. Administrators are all enjoying a little summer break, just a few things, and I'll, the administrative report will really just be kind of a look at some of the projects that are going on on campus. These are a few things I just wanted to point out, CSET goals, we've got a new board agenda that you guys were working with before we started, I don't know that it has it tonight, but in the future, the, does it have it, Isaac, the CSET goal?
It's only on the website.
Okay, well, in the future, your CSET goal will be on your agenda on your iPads, you can just click that goal there to see what that item attacked, what goal that item is connected to. Portrait of a Graduate, we have a community group with our community school stakeholders coming up with that Portrait of a Graduate, which is kind of a list of what we want graduates of Willow Springs High School to showcase once they've, once they've graduated, and that group has put together a really good list, we're working with Mr. Knapp right now to make that look good and pleasing, and we're gonna present that to you in August, so looking forward to that, that's a, that's been a really good process to kind of really dial down on what we want, those characteristics that we want from Willow Springs graduate. CTE funding, the governor signed the budget today, so that $500,000 that was earmarked for Willow Springs Schools for CTE, that went through.
Awesome.
We don't wanna put on anything officially yet, but I can tell you guys that that, that's gonna go through, and that gives us a lot of flexibility when we're talking about some of the construction stuff that we're gonna look at here in a minute, and just moving all of those parts around, and yeah, we're excited about that, and again, thanks to Mr. Schmidt, Josh Owens, our representatives and legislators for making that happen. It is July 1st, which normally we have the board meeting on the second Monday, this is an early board meeting, so just kind of a little asterisk on some of the end of the month statements and some of the things you'll see there, those will change a little bit in the coming days, just because it is so early in the month, and we'll recap that again in August. The July 4th parade, didn't want, did wanna mention that, that is, we've got, the school band is gonna be in that parade, that's at 10 o'clock on Thursday, so that's always just a really, one of the things Willow Springs does really well, is the big 4th of July parade, so the school, even though we're in summer, will have a part in that, and then we have our MSBA conference coming up on October 17th through the 19th, Debbie and Matt have expressed interest in that, and Matt has gone in the past, and if there's anybody else that would like to go, just let me know sometime this week, and we'll make sure and make arrangements for you.
It's hard to get to, but there's, there's a lot of good information there, I've learned a lot the last two times that I've been, thoroughly enjoyed the time up there.
Right, and I would imagine they're gonna hit on a lot of the changes that are coming down the pipe as far as funding and so on goes.
I have, I won't be able to make it this year, but if I was available, I would definitely go to it.
It's a, it's a good time and good learning opportunity, so again, if you're interested in going, let me know this week, and we'll make sure you got a room, it'll be in Kansas City. All right, we'll kind of take a little bit of a tour around campus at some of our construction projects, this isn't all by any means, but it gives you an idea of what, what's going on. The preschool playground, that you guys were so good to approve a few months ago, looks fantastic, you can't really tell from the picture, the surface is that, it's that rubberized surface that we use in the middle school, and no more gravel, so the kids can, can fall pretty comfortably there, and they'll be able to, to use that thing a lot, and really, it holds up pretty well as long as you're not picking at it, so we're hopeful that will last for a good long time, and I know the preschool teachers down there are very excited about that, and the kids are gonna have a good time on that new surface. The high school roof, I didn't go up to the roof to get a picture of the high school roof, but they're working on it, there's a crane, that's been a few weeks in the making, they're hoping to be done mid-July with that project, I know the maintenance staff is a little frustrated because we have gotten some pretty good rain during this project, and at times, things were not covered up like they should've been, so that's led to some more problems underneath that we've, that we've had to work through, but we're working with, with Stiles to get that stuff taken care of, and I'll be anxious for them to remove that crane and get everything off of there, and this is, we're closing in on the completion of that, that big roofing cycle that you guys started several years ago, the B building will be next summer, and then that's the end of the roofing cycle, so we should be good for roofs for, you know, the next 10 or 20 years before we start talking about making a roofing cycle.
Is this the same contractor that we had?
Yeah, this is the same, same guys that started it, and next summer, we'll be able to finish those projects, so that'll be nice to not only get it done, but get it off the budget as well. Parent pickup and drop-off continues to kind of take shape with our fencing, so the picture on the left is right in front of the Hicks house, they just put in that sliding gate, was it today or, yeah, I guess today or Friday, they put that in, so that'll be closed during the day, that'll close that street during the school day, but then it'll be open when school is not in session, there'll no longer be parking in there in front of the middle school where that half circle was, so that'll open that up for traffic, for kid, kid traffic.
Kid traffic.
Yeah, and so on the, the picture on the right, and you can't see it, I probably should've, it's hard to get that in a, in a good picture, but that's in front of the elementary, and it goes to the, the old gym there, and that will be the new elementary, parent pickoff, parent pickoff, like picking people off, pick up and drop off, and then we've got some, some asphalt guys coming in here in the next couple of weeks, and they're gonna, they're gonna make that look a lot nicer and fix the, and seal that up for us, and excited about that, I'll have another update in August for you on that one, and that, it should be finished at that point.
Is that getting a new paint job on that?
Yeah, we'll be restriping.
To help that flow a little better?
Yeah, there'll be lots of signage and clearly marked paths of where we need people to go, right, and I've talked with our newspaper and our communications people, and we're gonna really, you know, put that out heavily at the 1st of August, trying to give people a good advance notice of how that's gonna work.
Probably most people don't even know that's going on.
Right, right, so there's some work to do there, for the first couple of weeks of school, we're gonna have a lot of people stationed at the old locations to tell them, hey, you, you need to go over here, so there'll be a learning curve for sure. This one's kind of hard to see, I just, I didn't want a bunch of pictures, but this is the middle school entryway, so you're coming down the stairs from the middle school office there, and that's the entrance that faces the street, and so what they've done there is they've just put in this wall.
That faces you, like your office, like, or the, no, the street.
This faces the street, yeah.
It's the one on the side there?
Yeah, yeah.
Version?
Yeah, so what they've done is made an entryway there, there was enough room to do that, our guys have done all of this, got the window there, so basically, it's a secure entry for the middle school, so now all of our buildings have that secure entry point, so this was a really, you know, I credit our, our maintenance guys and middle school administration and everybody else for figuring out a way to do this on a really low cost, and this was not a huge money commitment from us to get this done, and it really helps the security for our middle school.
So, looking through the window of that one door, what do we see there?
Yeah, that's a reflection.
No, you'll see, that, that's the actual entrance to the middle school beyond these first doors here, so we're coming down the stairs from the middle school office.
Right.
And you've got, that's a new set of doors and a new wall with a new little sliding off.
So it's kind of like a lobby area type deal?
Yes, so what they've done is they've taken that area and they've split it.
Right.
So that now you have a holding area for parents that are needing to drop off, you know, lunch or whatever for their kids, and so we can check people in before just giving them full access to the building.
But there won't be any personnel right there?
No, there'll be an intercom to the office, and then a student helper probably will have to run down and either, and let's let them in if they need to come in or pick up the, pick up the lunch.
So is the new part outside of these doors that we're looking at?
No, that is the new part.
This is the new part?
Yes.
Okay.
The original doors are, and I should've taken some pictures.
The red ones.
Right, yeah.
So they won't be buzzed, like in high school, will they, the doors?
They won't, no, the doors won't unlock for them, somebody will have to physically open the door for them if they're gonna get in.
And that's a different floor than what was, or at least it's a different color.
That has been re, yeah, they took, they took whatever was on there off, and that's, that's what's under it, they've shined it up and done a nice job with it. Okay, Opportunity Hall, this is the, the old MODA building, this is the Ag portion of that building, and these guys, you know, Mr. Walden and Mr. Talbert, along with some student help and maintenance help, they have done all of this themselves, and, and they wanna, they, they may not be totally ready when school starts, but they're gonna be pretty close, so that, the picture on the right is the new shop door that they put on, and I think they'd like to do at least one more in addition to that, but that one's, that one's in, and they'll, they'll need to be some resurfacing there to make that to where you can drive into that. Then, right beyond that garage door is what you're looking at on the left, that's that lower level of Opportunity Hall, that will be the shop level, and you can see the lighting changes that are, that are going on there, the flooring, getting that carpet off was, was a massive undertaking, so they're gonna, they're gonna shine that up and make it look good, but that will be a great area for the shop, lots of square footage there, and they're working on ventilation and all of that to get that ready for the shop. So then if you go upstairs in that same building, and I could've taken a ton of pictures, and anytime you guys wanna come over and look at that, let me know, and we'll be happy to get you in there. Okay, so the blue walls here, and of course, that's FFA blue on those walls, they put up a bunch of walls in the, on the upstairs part to section that on into classrooms, that was a really big open area, so this part with the blue walls is kind of gonna be the commons area for, for different classrooms, the picture on the left, that'll be Mr. Talbert's classroom, and then the picture up top, I joked with him, he's now got the best classroom in the district, that's Mr. Walden's classroom, and it sits up there with those, those windows looking out onto the street, it's just a really, really pretty area, and then of course, eventually underneath all of this will be our FCCLA portion, but our tenants are still there for now, but when they leave, then we'll start renovating that, and of course, all that $500,000 that we got from, from the state is gonna help us continue to do all of this, and do it the way it needs to be done, so excited about all of that, and then I just wanted to go over, like, those are the big projects, but you know, Ethan and Landon and Vic and Carl and Mike, they've been working on all of, all of these other things, and I just kind of wanted to give them some, some kudos for all the things that they're doing, light camera poles in the student parking lot, they've done lighting in the middle school, one of the big things, the middle school teachers, this was kind of a cool thing, that Dr. Johnson had some of his teachers go around to other buildings just to kind of see what they were doing and environments, and they said, you know, the lighting is, what we, they noticed when they came back, our lighting is really dark in the middle school, so they got some new lighting to lighten it up.
We spent a lot of money on all new.
Well, we did, but I don't know the specifics of which lighting that they-
Seventh grade hall, eighth grade hall?
Dr. Johnson's not here to tell me about that.
Just hallway?
It was just light, it was bulbs.
Hallways?
Yeah, just seventh grade hallway.
Probably using a different LED bulb.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we were, we're not redoing fixtures or anything, just changing out some, some lighting to make it a little brighter for the middle school, so I'll check on that, guys, I can tell that. The shackles came off.
You have stricken our-
Yeah, yeah, wasn't my decision on the lighting, but we'll, we'll check on that.
Please look in that.
Absolutely, absolutely, we just wanna make it lighter for the teachers, you know?
You're very perceptive there with your feeling there.
Yeah, yeah, that was easy to see.
Should have researched what lighting is, has a calming effect.
Yes, yeah, we need it in the boardroom as well. Classroom movement, every summer we have lots of classroom movement, that's a big undertaking, and you know, through the year, we don't really see that, it's just set up and ready to go, but that's a, that's, that's a lot of work. The cat trailer has new decking, eventually, we would love to get rid of the cat trailer, like, we get rid of all of our trailers, but we're gonna have to keep it for a little while, so they got a new, a new deck. Back flows on football fields, both practice and Polinsky, fixed some leaks at Polinsky that are a consistent problem for us, huddle cameras at Polinsky and Mumford, so huddle is what coaches use for game film, and so our huddle package allows us to get their cameras up, and we can have access to those for like when we're streaming as well, and they're, they're mounted cameras that, they're good cameras, right Andrew?
Yeah, they're actually really cool, they'll track, they'll track the player, whatever they're doing, which sports like, on football, they'll follow the ball and basketball and stuff and go back and forth, it's really neat.
Pick up and drop off work continues, and a lot of our guys are doing that, middle school classroom updates, they're getting a bunch of updates, tile flooring repairs, painting around the district, I walked through the middle school today and had a nice paint high after I left, it's getting a lot of, a lot of attention. Prepping trailers for removal, that cannot come soon enough, but unfortunately, we're probably gonna have to wait for a while, the gentleman that purchased our trailer can't get anybody to move it until the first week of August.
Wow.
The guy that we've got to demo the other trailer really needs that, the first trailer to be gone before they can demo, because then we're gonna do the dirt work and then get everything ready, so we're gonna be pushing right up until the first day of school, I'm still hopeful that we can have that done before the first day of school, but that's also taking a lot of time and effort to get everything out of those trailers, unhook them, get them ready to, to be gone.
Air up the tires.
Yeah, grounds are working across campus, just getting everything looking good, and then lead water remediations, we should have a report for you in August or September on finishing up our lead water remediations, they'll be back to test for that, deep cleaning and repairing, our custodial crew does a fantastic job with that, and these two guys and their, their help such as it is, I know they'd like more help, but the help they've got, do a good job to get, I mean, it's just, it's, it's non-stop for custodial tech and maintenance, and they're all doing a really great job, with still half a summer to go.
The wood shop, is it moving this year, will it be before school starts, or where?
It will not move before school starts, but it could be something that, you know, it might be a semester move if we can coordinate it.
Because Ag's gotta get-
Because Ag's gotta get their stuff out before we can get wood shop up there, but as soon as they get out-
And that probably wouldn't be too much of a remodel in the current Ag's wood shop.
No, 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 yeah, that'll just be a matter of, you know, arranging a few things and making sure we have room, but that's, that's next on the, on the radar.
Okay.
Anything else?
I would assume we're gonna have to hire more custodial staff for the buildings over there?
Eventually, you know, we have one right now that we've, we've kind of designated, CTE and then doing the training facility, so when we get up to a full working two buildings over there, yeah, we may have to have one.
What'd you say, training facility?
The weight room.
The weight, okay.
Yeah, yeah, they do both of them.
Okay.
Yeah. Anything else?
Then, where are we, what are we ready for?
Communications.
Communications update.
So communications update, we, of course, before last year, we hired a communications director to take, to take on all our marketing and communications, and she did a fantastic job, Jenny was, was great, unfortunately, she, with family circumstances, needed to move on, so we elected to not hire someone for that position, because that, it just takes a very specific skill set and background to do that, and we don't have a lot of those in our area, however, we do have the opportunity to partner with a communications firm, Amplified Communications, they do communications and marketing for small school districts that don't have a communications director, so I would propose that we partner with them for this coming year, the service will take the place of our communications director position, and continue hopefully all of the, the good stuff that Jenny started with social media and the way we communicate with, with parents and community members, I think, still think that that's a huge part of what we do, I still think ideally we have a communications director, but in lieu of that, I think this is the next best thing.
And here, it says, you know, the $10,000 a year, but if they travel, we have to cover gas, fuel, just some nuts and more on top of all that, did I read that right?
If, if we requested that they cover a certain event or be, yeah, just like what we would do for administrators.
At same rate?
Yeah, yeah, I don't anticipate that being very often, most of what-
Well, I didn't know if that, like, wherever they're at, they have to drive up here every day and take a picture.
It's based, no, no, that's, yeah, and I see where that, no, they're based in West Plains, the 95% of what they do will be stuff that is emailed to them from us.
Is a lot of that gonna come from like Bear Media or things like that?
Yeah, Bear Media and teachers, which Jenny relied on a lot of people sending her things, and then, then it's a matter of taking all of that and amplifying, like it says in the name.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that 10,000 then turn into 20,000.
No, she really won't be creating content, content, we're sending her the content, and she's putting it out, so it really won't be, you know, most of what Jenny did really was not on campus either.
But it'll be the same, kind of the same deal there, you have the final say in what the school, you're still the voice of what's going on there.
Definitely, yeah, so I think it's a win-win, we get to continue with, with the quality of having that, that communications and marketing, and we get to drop our investment a little bit.
It has our CSET goal on there by the way.
Oh, it does?
Yeah.
Good, that one did. Any questions about Amplified?
Well, it seems like we're getting, hopefully we get to the same result, and it may be-
And it's a yearly contract, so if it's not, if we're not pleased with it, we'll go another direction, but I think it's definitely worth, worth, worth trying out.
I agree.
All right, ready to move on to student activity?
Student activity accounts, this is why the superintendent doesn't like the July meeting very well, this happens every July, we ask the board to take care of any overages in student activity accounts, and it varies from year to year on which accounts are over, I'm very pleased that all of our student accounts are in the black, with the exception of middle school and high school athletics, which are always in the red every year, this year's a little higher than normal, middle school athletics, you'll see there, revenues 1,134, expenditures 954, I took officials out, so one of the things, you know, we can discuss this as a board, but I feel like we need to make a budgetary account for officials, because right now, officials are getting thrown in with the student account, and it's really, it's really making it seem a lot worse than it is, because we have to pay, we don't have any choice on that, we have to pay our officials, that money figure has continued to rise through the years, so that's, that's- Money figures continue to rise through the years, so that's, that's offsetting this quite a bit.
Are you saying basically splitting officials away from, hey, we bought jerseys or we bought helmets or basketballs?
To me, that shouldn't be even a thing.
That's not in here though, is it?
I thought that was expenditure.
It is.
Football, I mean, helmets are there in this.
Yes, helmets. Reparation of helmets are not in here, but there are other equipment costs.
That's up ours at twenty-two thousand.
Topics, but you're saying the expenditures is going to be classified as what, basically, the coaches or whatever and athletic director designated for that sport, what they needed, whether it be baseballs or basketballs.
All of that will continue to fall under.
But officials is going to be in its own.
Column.
Yes, because that's not really.
That's not student act, yeah.
And we're not deciding to spend money on that. We have to spend money on that.
We have no option there.
Yeah.
Why don't we just have an athletic budget? Like, why, why does the athletic director have this budget? And then we have this over here. Why isn't it all one thing that we say, listen, this is the amount of money you spent last year. This is what you have this year. You know, if, if referees are higher or whatever at the end of the hunt, we'll have the discussion and say, you know, I'm just asking why it's set up the way that it's set up?
That's a really good question. And it's like, we've done, it's because we've done this for decades. And I don't think that that's a good practice to just keep doing it, because that's the way we've always done it. Because we always get to July and here we are again. And we know that, like, our athletic director, everybody else knows, we're going to be over. I mean, it's just because we've been over for decades. So that's a valid, that's a valid question. And I'm good with, with changing it if that's what we need to do.
We probably need to do a little more.
Yeah, for sure.
There, but I mean, if we're, what is, what is our total over on?
Our total overage is going to be twenty-nine thousand seven eighty-five.
Yeah.
Well, well, that's for high school.
Thirty.
That's thirty-four something.
So if Robert has a forty-five thousand dollar a year budget, and then the student activities are going over thirty-four thousand dollars, why aren't we looking at a, you know, an eighty thousand dollar budget or eighty-five thousand dollar budget and saying, here?
We should be.
What you're saying is you need the budget to cover this.
Yes, just make one.
Right, just, just say this is what does it, and if that, you know, if we give him the amount that covers the, the referees and do all that stuff, when we get to this time next year and say it's five thousand dollars over, then we say, A.D. James, why is it five thousand dollars over? And he'll say, because of X, Y, and Z. And we have a clearer picture of what we're doing, I think.
Yeah, just to tag on to that a little bit, the second question I put down there is, you know, not only do I think we need a new budgetary account for officials, but every year, when, when the board writes this off, our bookkeeper starts it back with a hundred dollars in their budget. Well, you know, I mean, that's, so they're already behind the eight ball before they even get started.
That's just open account or something, start, start again.
Do what?
Do that.
Start the, yeah, yeah. But there is no budget for the student activity for athletics.
I'm a little mixed up, but strike me out here. It's easy to do. Is this account the same place where all of the equipment that we buy for athletics is in? Or is that something separate? Because it used to be, that used to always be separate. Well, we got so much money, you know, we used to buy football helmets and shoulder pads or uniforms or all this. That was, that was one account. And then the other account was your officials and your, basically, officials and a few other things, and then your revenue, all went in that account. They were separate. So I don't know. Is this, do you know?
I, I don't know. I do know there are some equipment expenditures in here, but I don't know if that's all. I know there are other athletic accounts that are used for other things.
Reconditioning the helmets is in this.
We moved that to, there was another athletic account that was not, that we had a budget for that, so we could move it over there without having to write it off. So that kind of goes back to what Matt's saying, like.
Let's, let's consolidate this and have a little better picture of it, maybe, you know?
Consolidated, or I, I actually like the idea of better keeping the officials separate.
Yeah, well, you could do both. You could keep them separate and then consolidate all this other stuff.
I like that idea.
If we had, I mean, I'm no expert on budgets, but if you just have something open-ended like that with no cap or no stopping point or anything, you know, I mean, obviously, he has to spend what he has to spend on officials. We realize that. But it just doesn't seem like great budgetary practice. Cap, something. Like, we understand that that may go outside of that, but I don't think it'll go thirty, you know, if we budget properly, it should go thirty-five thousand dollars.
Exactly. No, I'm all for that. I would love to see, I would have a number that, and I think, I think our athletic director would as well.
Does that figuring that you have up there, does that include their mileage? Because that's, that's going to be a big, that's going to be a big.
That's probably a big chunk of that, because.
Do you know if that's.
Like a coach's mileage?
No, officials.
Officials mileage.
Cause they're probably getting fifty-five cents.
Yeah, all the official pay is in that.
Okay, so it's mileage and everybody, okay.
But if you'd like, I can come back. We'll, we'll have a, a board retreat where we could talk about it or in the August session as well. And I could, we could, Robert could come and, and we could have a, a conversation about consolidating those.
That'd be good.
Didn't you always have a number? You just.
No, of course, it was never, you know, he used to always run ten, twelve, fifteen thousand, maybe, you know, wasn't because, but as Marty says, officials pay is really, I mean, it's really.
Well, and everything.
Yeah, because they're getting fewer.
Well, Robert mentioned, I talked to him this afternoon, and he mentioned just, just the fees to enter tournaments. He said, a tournament two, two or three years ago, it would have been a hundred dollars, and now two fifty. And all of those things have jumped up.
And that expenditures, especially on a high school or any of them, I mean, those, that has to be balls and bats and uniforms and stuff to be that number, that high, correct?
There is some of that, yes. So I can come back definitely in either one of those meetings and, and we can, we can talk about. Because I, I would love to see a, a better system to where in July, we're not talking about writing off this money.
I'd say the AD's budget probably hasn't moved in a really long time, and this, this is just expanding out.
It's doing the same thing over and over, just because we've always done it, yeah.
Should each department be allocated a certain amount of money, like the football program gets so much, the tennis program?
I think that's what, isn't that what Robert's?
No.
Does?
No, you can't, I, I never thought you could do that, because you never, never know who's getting uniforms from one year to the next and things like that. It's, it's so hard to say, hey, football team, you get five thousand dollars, basketball team, you get three thousand dollars. It's that, that really ties their hands, I think.
Why wouldn't you know he's getting the uniforms from one year and then?
I mean, is that something?
But then you'd have to change the budget.
It's going to change every.
Every year, like what you're budgeting for that team.
Wouldn't you like one year get baseball, one year get football?
Right, so it's going to change.
And you, they're going to change because they're more expensive.
Yeah, so each has their own budget.
Different, they're going, you're going to be in a rotation. One year, you know, football might be the rotation, boys' basketball, it might be girls' basketball, it might be baseball. So it's hard to just say, you know, this is ten thousand, this is fifteen thousand. And then what you'll find out too is, if you tell a coach, hey, you've got three thousand dollars in your budget, okay, they may not need to spend three thousand, but they're going to spend it.
I mean, that's, that's the AD's job, right?
That's the AD's job.
Needs to be.
What?
Yeah, whatever. Would be my thought. I don't know. Does that sound, I don't know.
We can, we can definitely come back in August with numbers and ideas of how that would look. And that gives you guys some options on, on how that looks, so that we don't come back to this every July.
It seems odd.
It does. And I, I, I don't like it. And just because we've always done it, doesn't mean we always have to continue to do it.
Well, just the cost of officials is something that we could get a, I don't, we can't do much about it.
Well, we can budget for it. I mean, because we know.
We're going to pay it.
Yeah, yeah.
And you talked about tournaments. Used to, you'd go to, like, say, a track meet, and they wouldn't charge you, or they'd charge you, you know, not very much. And now, when you go to all these tracks, you get more track meets and they, they give medals out and, and then just all these tournaments, they just charge you like they didn't use.
I see on here, yeah, like for volleyball tournament, we're getting charged two hundred dollars, you know, for that.
For the, for a cross-country meet, twelve hundred dollars for porta potties.
Yeah, that's what ours, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I mean.
And that's just an example of, like, those things are, they cost way more than you think they do.
Yeah, and we don't, I mean, obviously, like, you know, it's not like, hey, now it's fifteen dollars to get into a basketball game or something like that, you know, it's still, well, three dollars to get in or whatever.
Yeah.
And so that's why, obviously, part of the expenditure side has gone up, but the, the revenue side is pretty.
We're not making money.
Yes.
So I will bring some stuff to you in August. In the meantime, I'm still going to ask that you, that you write off these two accounts tonight, because we need to, because that's what we have all this time. One little extra, talking about looking at all of this reminded me of our, our beverage contract. So just kind of give you an update on that. You know, we went with Coke with that idea that, you know, we'll be kind of bringing in some money from vending and rebates instead of getting that big upfront money. So twenty twenty-four to date, because I think we entered that agreement in December, January, right around the turn of the year. Vending, this is just profit for the school, seven hundred and thirty dollars, which we weren't receiving any vending profit from our former contract. And then five hundred and four dollars in rebates. So we've got twelve hundred and thirty-four dollars. Those funds will be used for future athletic needs. And that's just for a semester, so hopefully, we'll continue to, to add to that. And that'll help us out a little bit with some of those, like, scoreboards and, you know, that leads us back to sponsorships and stuff.
I was going to say, that would actually help in some of the expenditures.
I think it's worth mentioning that the, all these other programs have done an excellent job in staying in the black and that.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a really good point.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of, I mean, there's a tremendous amount of student groups and their leaders and the people involved have done an awesome job to.
Junior classes, one in particular, because they pay for the prom.
Well, and I, yeah, I know, we, we hear some, some commotion sometimes around prom time about tickets, but all of those clubs, and it's not just, you know, it's our FCC LA and all those groups stay in the blacks. So, yeah, good job of the high school to, to keep everybody where they need to be. That's all I've got.
All right, then.
I've got your items up there. Oh, we are missing something. Yeah. There it is. All right, sorry, I had the slide deck out of order. So last month, we approved, I'm going to mess this up, GDBDA, which was support staff leave. We should have also approved GCBDA, right? No?
Did you say that?
GCBDA. Basically, there's two policies, one for support staff, one for professional staff. We need both of those approved, and we just approved one last time. It's the same thing. It's the twelve days. Six leaves.
Is this the policy after it's been?
No, that is the current.
This is what you want us to approve?
No, that's the current policy. What we will approve is the change to twelve, twelve days.
Days of leave.
Yeah, yeah. And MSBA will, will change that for us. And we'll send that out once that's done. But my apologies for leaving out that letter and the, for the two policies. Now we'll go back to items for action.
Well, before we get to that, we got comments from guests. I'll make a comment about our guests. I appreciate you guys and all the work you do. It's kind of like some of this other stuff that's going on. We don't have much of an idea of what all you do. If you get a chance, catch them in their little hole down in the, is that the opportunity building?
Yes.
It's mind-boggling. The wires that come here and running that, the brain center of the school network here. So anyway, I know that there's all kinds of stuff going on besides the school board, the school app, the school board app that you coached us through tonight, so I appreciate that.
Andrew likes any kind of food. Isaac likes Sonic drinks. There you go.
All right, moving on to items for action here. A motion would be in order to set the tax levy hearing, which we have to do every year for five forty-five P.M. on Monday, August the twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
Can, can I ask a question about the, the hearing that's set? Like, what are we, what exactly are we doing there? We're giving the community an opportunity to voice their opinion on the tax levy.
Yes, on our two seventy-five tax levy, yes. And I'll spend that fifteen minutes giving you a brief history of the tax levy. Good stuff.
Tantalizing.
Good stuff, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, is there a lot of history? Is it just like, hey, it's always been two seventy-five?
I want to say something sarcastic, but I'm just going to let it lie.
That's the hearing, and then we will set it.
You'll set the rate.
Later, later.
Later in the meeting?
Board meeting.
Yes.
So is there a motion to?
I'll move a motion.
Second.
Set that, all right, the tax levy hearing for five forty-five, Monday, August twelfth. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? And a motion would be in order to reconcile all student activity accounts.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And a motion would be in order to approve a contract with Amplified Communications and Marketing.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, then a motion would be in order to, we're going to do it in this order here. It's, it's different on.
You can do it in whatever order.
Okay, we're going to set the summer board retreat for August the twenty-fourth, nine A.M. A motion being ordered to set that.
So moved.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Now, policy GCBDA, a motion would be in order to revise policy GCBDA.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. I would now receive a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Go call.
Aye.
Coach Call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.